Stand by.
Hi, it's Kevin Aronson again. I got disconnected.
You're live.
It's like Chinese torture.
You're live.
So I was waiting for the go ahead, so.
Yep.
I just text him.
Okay, Chairman, you can go.
Hey, thank you, Marcus. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the zoning board meeting Village of Buchanan, December ninth, 2020. Uh, before I ask you to stand for the pledge, I want to introduce our new member, Harmon Bacher. I don't see where he's at, but hi.
I'm on the top.
Got you there. Just welcome to the, welcome to the zoning board. It's his first meeting and we're glad to have you.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Okay, if everybody could stand for the pledge?
Aye.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. I think we'd like to approve the minutes for, uh, November 12th. I've been thrown twice. I don't have any changes myself.
Gary, this is Marco. I also don't have any changes.
Okay.
This is Mary. I don't have any changes.
Okay.
This is Ed Mavic. I do not have changes.
Okay. Okay, so on a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
I second, Mary.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm assuming that, uh, Harmon abstained for that, right?
Right.
Right, okay. All right, so moving right along, old business. Our, uh, first on the agenda is a, uh, it's a calendar number one dash twenty dash BZ. It's a continuation of a public hearing for Brian Calibro on, uh, two twenty-six Travis Avenue. I spoke with the attorney, uh, yesterday and, and, uh, she is still working out, uh, working with his attorney and the village board to come up with a solution that might be, be good for everybody, so. I'm hoping that, uh, maybe by next month they'll have something, but for tonight, I'd like to just, uh, carry it over till December meeting. Do I need a motion for that, Stephanie?
Yep.
Okay. Have a motion, please?
This is Mary. I move to carry it over to the next meeting in January.
Okay.
And this is Marco. I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'm abstaining because it's old business.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for lot coverage variance for in-ground pool on property located at one oh five Burke Court in Buchanan. Mr. and Mrs. Horgan. I'm pretty sure I saw Mr. Horgan here someplace.
Yes, sir.
Ah, got him, okay. So would you like to just, for the new people that are listening in, just give us a little update on what you're doing?
Sure, uh, for those of you that I haven't met, my name is Todd Horgan, uh, born and raised in the village, lived here for thirty-seven years. Um, we're trying to put in an in-ground pool in the backyard. Uh, the pool itself would be, um, sixteen by thirty-six feet. I'm sorry, correction, eighteen by thirty-six feet, um, with a small patio around it. And the total square footage of the pool and the patio, would be, I believe, right about eleven hundred square feet. Um, the total square footage would put me over the allowance of thirty percent by approximately five hundred square feet and put me at thirty-three percent. Just asking for the lot coverage variance on that. There is an easement, um, we'd be respecting ten-foot setbacks from the property line on both sides of the pool. And, uh, it's gonna be a vinyl liner pool. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for anybody who wasn't here last meeting or didn't, wasn't at the house on Saturday.
Well, thank you, Todd. Uh, last Saturday, uh, the whole board made a site inspection at his home. And, uh, we looked at the location where the pool, where he wants to pu- put the pool in and all. And, uh, although he's looking for the three percent, there's no guarantee he's gonna use that. Because if he runs into rock, as we talked about Saturday, he knows that, uh, there's definitely gonna have to be an adjustment.
Correct.
But he's still looking for the three percent to put the pool in as it is. Um, like I said, I was at the site visit with everybody on the board, including Harmon, he was there, so. If you have any questions or any comments, please go ahead.
Well, we haven't opened a public meeting. This is supposed to be a public hearing, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Ed. Sloughing off on my job. Yes, son, could I, could I have a motion to open a public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Mary.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, so this is Marcus. If anybody from the public would like to say anything, they can, if they're online, we got a couple of attendees. Uh, board members, you can see the number of attendees on your screen. If you was on your, on your home screen, just scroll and you see the attendees. Anybody raise their hand? If anybody wants to comment on this and they're on their cellphone or mobile phone, they can hit star nine to raise their hand. And just so everybody, everybody on the board to know too, Brian Cook is on the line. Brian Cook is our new building inspector, so I want to make sure everybody knows who that is on the, on the screen. So again, anybody can raise their hand, the chairman, uh, our chairman will be able to recognize you. If you're on your phone, hit star nine to raise their hand. So, we're waiting. I don't see any, anybody raising their hand yet. Chairman, if you want to give them a minute or so to see if anybody wants to say anything.
Sure, not a problem. Like to take this moment to say, uh, hi, Brian Cook. Welcome to the village.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you when we can.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, nobody's raised their hand, so I guess nobody wants to comment on this application, just to let you know.
Okay. So, board members, you got nothing else, well, from what you saw, uh, sun, Saturday? Looked pretty cut and dry to me, but, uh, is anybody want to put a motion to grant this application?
Yeah, this is Marco. I'll make the motion to grant the application for variance for lot coverage for the pool. Uh, we're gonna go from thirty feet, thirty percent to thirty-three percent. That includes the pool as well as the patio around the pool.
I believe you're correct on that. Can I get a second?
I'll second it, Mary.
Okay, Mary. Does anybody have any questions on the board at all?
Uh, the only thing I would make mention, Gary, is, uh, because this is a public hearing, do we have all the paperwork?
Yes, we do. At least I do.
Okay.
I have it.
As long as the record reflects it.
Yeah, no, I have it. And he paid his fee.
Okay.
So. Brian, Brian, I guess you were out there and looked. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry. Did you go out to look at Horgan's at all, Brian?
No, I did not, sir.
Okay. All right, no problem. Okay, um, I guess I will take the motion to okay this, or did I ask for that already?
You want to close the public hearing, Gary?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
I will take a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it, Marco.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now I guess it's okay, Stephanie, right?
There you go.
And we would like to make a motion to, uh, allow the Horgans to get three more percent of lot coverage.
This is Marco. I'll, I'll repeat the motion, uh, to grant lot coverage variance from thirty percent to thirty-three percent for the pool and the patio at, uh, one oh five Burke Court.
Thank you, Marco.
This is Mary. I second it.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Good luck with your poll, Todd. I hope you don't run into, uh, rock like we talked about. But this is rock canon you live in. You know, you know that, right?
I do. All right, I appreciate the opportunity and everybody's help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the holidays.
Thanks, Aaron. Thank you. Okay. The, uh, next thing on the agenda is calendar five dash twenty dash BZ. It's a public hearing for lot coverage variance for an in-ground swimming pool on property located at one seventy-one Cortlandt Street. For the Leons.
Uh, yes. Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Jim Leon and tonight, myself and our engineer, Mr. Robert Rizzelli, will be speaking on behalf of my parents, Jamie and Cecilia Leon, who reside at one seventy-one Cortlandt Street in Buchanan. My parents, Jamie and Cecilia, are requesting variance for an underground pool for which they wish to build in their backyard. They're looking to build a safe outdoor space that their grandchildren can enjoy during their, these difficult moments that we're all living in. If there are any questions that you have for me or Mr. Rizzelli, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Uh, before we ask you any questions, I guess we should open a public hearing.
Yes.
I'll make the motion, though. I'll make the motion, Marco, to open a public hearing for Leon at one seventy-one Cortlandt Street.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ed, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so I repeat myself again. Um, okay, we got one raised hand. Um, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to unmute so they can speak?
Uh, I, I want to make a statement first before we, uh, proceed with this, so it's on the record in the public hearing. This afternoon, about four o'clock, I received not one, but forty-four pages of supposedly documented accusations about the partying question here tonight. Um, I don't know if any of them are true or not. It's not my job or our job to know that. So I would like, before we get into arguing about anything with this, I would like to hold this over till next month and have our engineer and, uh, building inspector maybe get together and see if any of these things are true or the building department. I don't know if they're true and I'm sure nobody sitting on my board knows they're true. So, like I said before, in my opinion, before we start talking about yes or no, I, I would think that we need to dig into these accusations first and find out what, what it is. Okay. First off, Mr. Leon, have you received these documents?
No.
Okay. There, I would, I would concur with the chairman, uh, we did receive documents this afternoon and you most certainly should be, should see them, have an opportunity to respond to them. But I think we all will also have some questions that we, we do want you to and your engineer to address.
Okay.
Uh, for next month. And I think that, uh, once we've heard from there, I think that's a help for us. And certainly for yourselves to, uh, in terms of, you know, uh, uh, speaking up for your proposal. We did as a board go out, we have reviewed the area, we have seen the area. Uh, but there are a couple of different questions that we have and that have been brought to our attention, so we wish to have them uh, addressed. Uh, there, apparently, we, uh, we do have, uh, we do have some concerns about the impacts of an in-ground pool in regards to the groundwater table in your area. The possibility of, possibly, again, we're only gonna say possibility of perhaps some flooding on adjacent lands. Those are questions that have been brought out and we would like to have you address them with your, you know, engineer.
Sure, is that something that we can, um, that, well, I, I'm looking at the screen and I don't see the engineer on the call and he was having trouble dialing in. I was gonna try to get him on speakerphone. But just to clarify, the engineer that is working on this project is different than the architects that were working on the original build in two thousand and fifteen. So if, if this is a, uh, an inquiry with regards to something from the original build, then that'll be something that we need to address with the original, um, architects.
Sure. I, I, but I do think that we do have, as I just mentioned to you, I think those are questions we would like you, and certainly your current engineer, to address with us because obviously that's something that he would, should be looking into and.
Sure, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to dial him in right now because it doesn't appear like he's on here. Um, just give me one second.
I mean, we do, as indicated by Mr., our chairman, I think that we would prefer to maybe leave everything open for another month so you can address all any issues.
Yeah, I believe that's reasonable.
You know.
Jamie, I'm here. I'm, I'm listening to this.
You're listening to it, okay, I, because I don't see you on it and, uh, yeah, so.
I'm listening and I, I can, I can see visually, but I'm just, for some reason, I can't speak.
Oh, oh, definitely, I can address, what's his na- what's his name?
Mr. Rizzelli. Robert Rizzelli. Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I think we're getting, I think we're starting to get a little off course. We can address all those issues and I'm sure we will, but I personally think we need to find out about these accusations first. Either they are or they're not. So.
Well, I have, I have a question with regards to it. If, if, so the house was built in two thousand and fifteen, um, and we received a, a certificate of occupancy. So is this something that, like, I, I just don't understand how something with regards to that is coming up. I haven't seen the accusation yet, so. I can't speak to it unless I know what they are.
To be per- per, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't know when it all happened, but I can tell you that being we had these forty-four pages, it, it, it's really right that the zoning board looks into this before we start talking about the variance and whether you need this or that, or, you know.
Sure, sure.
I just think they need to be cleared up. They might all be totally nothing, but I, I don't know that and I'm sure nobody sitting here on my board tonight knows that.
You're right. I, I, I guess I, I guess what we need to know is whether we should have an attorney also, um, look into it so that, you know.
That's certainly your prerogative.
I think once you get the package, as everybody indicated, we got the package late this afternoon, so as a board, we also just had a first chance to look at it uh, later in the afternoon today, so you certainly need to have the package to take a look at it, review it, and you could probably pick it up from the village hall, I'm guessing, or, uh, it can be emailed to you as it was to me.
Yeah, if you, if you could email it, that's the easiest way, but we can certainly pick it up in, in the village office also.
Marcus, can that be handled? Can he be emailed?
Marcus, we can email to him? Uh, oh, absolutely. I can email him to be, uh, tonight as soon as we finish the meeting.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Um, like I said, I'd rather be safe than sorry here if we did something and then there was something left uncovered, you know, for, against our village, so.
Can I, can I just say something? This is Stephanie.
Yes.
To Mr. Leon. One of the, um, issues, and you'll see when you read, is whether or not, and this doesn't really have to do with two thousand and fifteen, it has to do with now. Because I know there, I know there were some groundwater issues and you did some work and you did some drainage work. Um, but there's some concern that putting in an in-ground pool may um, result in some disturbance to the underground water flow. And so you'll see that, and I would suggest, and I'm sure your, your engineer will jump on it with our engineer, the village engineer, George Palmer, because he's aware of it, and discuss what he or she thinks with regard to your specific site, what the issues were in fifteen that you addressed, or I assume you've addressed, and what the impact might be right now. So I think that's more to the point versus alleging and accusing you of things from two thousand and fifteen. I think this board is more concerned with what you're asking for and how that impacts the drainage and the water flow. And so you'll probably need a month to address some of that.
Yeah, I would, I would imagine, uh, I don't know, I can't speak to that, so I don't know. Rob, are you able to speak to that? I mean.
Oh, I, I can't, Jamie, without seeing what's, what these forty-four accusations are, what your information is, there's nothing to me to really say.
Okay.
To be honest, so.
Okay. All right, yeah, I mean, I, I guess we'll have to review it and, uh, and then, yeah, if there are any questions or things that need to be addressed, we'll certainly address them.
Well, we'll keep the public hearing open, even if we have to flip it over to January or whatever, till we get this straightened out because just to give you a variance right now or say no, doesn't seem fair to me.
No, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Chairman, you have, still have the one hand raised. Do you want to allow that person to speak or what would you like to do?
Well, it, uh, again, it, it, they can speak, but here's the thing, we're not gonna do anything at least at the very earliest, uh, December meeting.
January.
This is the December meeting. January meeting. And I got the right date for January, though. I got, I got January thirteenth.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't. I guess it's a, it's a village resident and would like to speak?
Yes, I'll, I'll mute him.
Hello?
Yes, you can, yes, can you hear it?
This is Kevin Aronson. I just, everything went blank and not sure.
Oh, you're the wrong one, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I, I'm muting him, but he's, he's still muted.
Hey, Marcus?
Yes.
Does he have to unmute himself?
It, it looks like he is muted, so yes, he has to unmute himself, so he's still muted. Mr. Lu, Mr. Lupica, you have to unmute yourself.
Would you want to put that picture that I made on the, uh, because I don't think there's anything to say?
Okay, he, he's on now. Chairman, he's on now.
I don't think there's anything to say. I think I gave you that presentation. I got a lot of questions.
You got a lot of background noise coming in.
Hey, can you, can you mute? I'm going to mute.
Okay, you can speak now.
I, I don't think there's much to say. I gave you all the, uh, information I have. Uh, you know, unfortunately, I, I'm being impacted in my property because of what was done. There's a lot of things that were not handled correctly. We don't have a steep slope permit on file. I don't think there was one ever on file. There's a lot of documentation that's missing out of the file that I went over with Brian Cook the other day. So I think the village has a lot of concerns, and I have concerns, of what was done and what wasn't done and what should have been done. So because I'm being impacted, I think you seriously need to look at what was done and how we can correct what's being, what's happening. And I think your engineers and your lawyer and you can all get together and figure it out. I know I have big concerns.
Okay. This is Mary Funtzen, and I'd like to, I, I think, uh, Chairman Bell has addressed those issues.
Yeah, well, he, he just pushing it off so they can look at it. But, but none of these issues have been addressed. You allowed somebody to build a property eighteen inches high without a steep slope permit. How does that function? How does that happen? Can anybody answer that?
Uh, listen, Mr. Lupica. Our engineer is gonna review this and get that. And then hopefully we'll be able to answer some of your questions. If not, you'll have to seek other alternatives.
Oh, I'm, I'm ready for that, too.
Well, I'm telling you that we're, we're gonna look into it. That's why I opened up with that.
Yeah, I, I, I heard what you said, but you can see I have a lot of questions and concerns in what I wrote.
Forty-four, forty-four pages, I got it for thirty, yes.
Yes, I, well, I emailed it to them this morning and they're gonna be getting a certified mail, but yes, there's a lot of pictures here which shows what was done, what should have not been done.
Okay, again, Mr. Lupica, we're gonna look into them and I don't think any further comments needed at this point.
Nope, nope, I don't think so. I think I'll wait for, uh, what you guys have to say and then I'll have some more comments, I would assume.
Okay. Thank you for your comments this evening.
I thank you for your time.
Okay, so we need a motion to push that over to December fifth, or did we do that? I mean, January thirteenth? January ninth?
I'll make the motion to push the public hearing out. Carry it over to the next meeting on January ninth for Leon. One seventy-one Cortlandt Street.
Uh, I second it, Mary.
Okay. And, and that's with the understanding that we're gonna get this stuff to the village engineer and ho- hopefully maybe you can get together with the building inspector and see if stuff wasn't done or was done. I, I have no idea and I know nobody on our board list, so. All right, before you go any further, January ninth, I see a twenty-twenty-one's a Saturday.
Isn't that what you said, Gary? It was the ninth or?
January, or January thirteenth.
January the thirteenth. I said, I, I have it written down here and I said the ninth. January, thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Just making sure.
I'm gonna have to have you call me the night before. All right, so we, we, we're holding this open in lieu of, uh, our engineer, Mr. Palmer, getting together with our, uh, with our building inspector. Um, if you guys are gonna meet out there one day to discuss this, I'd sure like to, uh, be involved in that if I could. Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Not the whole board, but, you know.
That little leaf yourself.
You got it. Okay. So moving on. Last but not least is a preliminary, a calendar number two dash twenty dash BZ. It's a preliminary submission for variance from the requirement of section two eleven dash nineteen dash one A and two eleven dash twenty-one dash, dash A, as well as an accessory structure and fence property located at two fifteen Catherine Street. Kevin Aronson.
This is actually a public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Isn't this a public hearing?
Yeah, I think we opened it, we opened a public hearing for this, didn't we? And then we had to postpone it?
I know we had to postpone it. I'm sorry if I'm jumping the gun.
Well, it's all right. I mean, do you have any, anybody have any recollection? Did we open a public hearing for this?
I believe we did. Kevin Aronson speaking. I believe we did. Yes, it did get postponed.
Right.
Yeah, it was opened in October.
Okay. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Aronson, um, as you know, uh, we've been out to visit your site. And, uh, I'd like you to, uh, give us a little, uh, for everybody else to know what you're looking for.
Sure. For the fencing, I'm looking to install an eight-foot fence just on the back of the property. Due to the topography of the land, the back of my lot and the properties on Rockledge, it creates a natural valley. Both from Rockledge and from Catherine Streets, the, the land tapers off, drops off probably ten feet from street level to the lower section at the property line at the rear of them. And with a six-foot fence, it's basically like putting up a two-foot fence. You gain absolutely zero privacy. Um, and again, this is naturally the way the land. And again, this is naturally the way the land falls back there. I'm only looking to do an eight-foot fence across the back to gain a little privacy. Um, and I believe when some of the board members were out there, I showed them at six feet, because of the way the land is, the topography of the land is, six feet when you're standing up near that, near my home, it looks like you're putting up no fence whatsoever. You see everything still clear as a bell. And uh, I, I just, I'm just trying to gain a little privacy. In addition to that, I did send a couple pictures, just walking up my street alone, Catherine Street. There are three eight-foot fences in place. I don't know whether they got permits or not, but you folks had said nobody has ever requested a permit, so I'm imagining that none of them have permits, none of them filed for a variance. And I did drive around town, there's probably two dozen eight-foot fences. So that's a lot of people that have gone ahead and uh done what they wanted to. And I'm just looking to do this the proper way and follow proper procedure, and I'm only looking to gain a little privacy in the back of my house. As for the accessory structure, the existing concrete pad is there, it has been there, I believe for 70, 80 years. Um, I'm just looking to build a small pavilion roof over it to utilize it in the summer, whereas the backyard is in the sun from 6:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. So I'm just looking to gain a little shaded area in the, on the backside of my property.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
The pavilion area, is it going to be a closed-in structure or just an open-air structure?
It would be open-air, folks, um, I, I would like to do a roof over it, a, a low-pitched roof, like a four-on-five pitch roof. It's the, the size of the concrete pad, I believe it's 17 by 12. So uh, yeah, I would, I would like to put a roof over it, again, I'm looking to do this to gain shade, as the backyard is like a frying pan right now. I've tried putting up some of the temporary, you know, pop-up tents and canopy systems that they sell. For some reason, it acts as a wind tunnel back there, and uh, everything I've purchased has gotten destroyed within a matter of weeks. Just doesn't stay put. Even with aluminum legs, the temporary pergolas blew right over.
Okay, um, well, Ms., Mr. Arson, like I explained to you when I was there, um, I, I just can't vote for an eight-foot fence. I told you that the day I was there. And as far as the patio, uh, to put up the thing, you noted that concrete slab was almost exactly on the property line, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you want to use that slab, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to put your building three feet off to the property line, on it.
Okay, so we're not, you're not guaranteeing me either variance, is what you're telling me?
I'll give you a variance for the fence for si- first length for six feet.
But uh. Then, this is as board members and as a taxpayer, you are now obligated to knock on every door tomorrow in town and hand them a violation for eight-foot fence and find them daily, and give them 10 days to have them ripped down. And I am personally going to make sure this happens. So call your neighbors and tell them to rip their eight-foot fence down, they're getting a fine tomorrow. And I want, I want your word as board members representing this town, you are going to go out tomorrow and find these people. They broke the law, and I'm trying to do this the right way, and you won't even grant me a variance? Sit this straight.
Well, I'm ready to grant. There's a lot of background here. I'm ready to grant.
Hey, Gary?
Yeah.
It's Stephanie. So six-foot fences are permitted, so he doesn't require, he doesn't require a variance for that, he can do that? And also, just to Mr. Arson's question, our building inspector is charged with, um, looking at, uh, alleged code violations, not the board, so they wouldn't be going out there and doing that. But the building inspector is.
Board members, you're obligated to follow up on it, I'm a taxpayer, you guys are getting paid. And as board members, you are now obligated to address all of the code violations in town immediately and find them all tomorrow. And if Mr. Cook can't handle it, the board members need to get on board and do it.
Okay, so you don't want a variance for your gazebo three feet off the si- your side yard?
You're not giving, you said I'm not getting anything, you said you're not giving me anything.
You, you didn't listen to me. What I said was the pad is on the property line. You could get, you could get, you can bring in your gazebo, because it's an auxiliary structure three feet off the line. So you could.
That's not a variance, I'm, I'm allowed to do that per code, that's not a variance.
Well, that's what I'm telling you.
Yes, so you're not granting me either variance. So that's fine, there's also some garages and all, and houses that are built within three feet in town. So you folks are going to be real busy, and the town's going to make a lot of money finding everybody next week. A lot of money. And I'm sure you're all going to be very popular because of this. And you will be hearing from a lawyer, too. Because if all these people could break the law and none of yous do anything about it, you're a disgrace. It's an absolute disgrace.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Arson.
Very good, you'll hear from a lawyer, and I am going to personally make sure, I want to see those fines issued.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Okay, um, the last, there's nothing on the agenda, but I do have a.
Chairman, somebody raised, uh, Stephanie wants to say something, but also somebody raised their hand, I don't know if you want to address their hand that got raised as well?
Sure, I, sure.
All right, Stephanie, you want to say something first before I open up to the public?
No, 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 I just didn't want him to move on without, uh, closing the public hearing and then taking a vote. But if we're, if we got somebody that wants to speak during the public hearing, that goes first.
Okay, if somebody with a 646 number wants to speak, you have to unmute yourself. Make sure you hit star 6 to unmute yourself, the 61646 number, if you can hear me. Star 6. He doesn't seem to be, uh, everybody can see him, right? He's still muted.
Yes.
Yeah, still muted.
He or she, whoever it is, is, yep.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, hi, this is, um, Sharon Cassidy, I reside next to Kevin Arson at 21 Catherine Street.
You, you must have a speaker on, or you got, he got a laptop or something, or you getting feedback?
I didn't get the name.
She just, she just muted herself again. Please unmute yourself. You're still muted.
We can hear, we can hear her, but.
Yeah, if, if you could speak, if, yeah, if you could speak louder, we can hear you slightly.
Okay, uh, this is Sharon Cassidy.
We're losing you.
And we understand that fences are monitored to ensure views and sunlight are maintained.
I, I'm sorry, who are we speaking, are you, are you, are you with, are you in the same room with, with Mr. Mr. Arson? But it looks like you're coming out.
No. No.
Okay, hold on a second. Okay, speak now?
Yeah, I think they're together with Kevin.
They are together.
No, Ke- Kevin's in White Plains in a hotel.
So you're coming through?
Yeah, my, my house isn't, uh, probably won't be done for another two weeks.
And who's Kevin on the screen?
Yes, yeah, Kevin there as well.
Yeah, I'm not on the screen, I'm just on the phone.
Oh, I see that, so, okay, so some, somehow we had another Kevin.
Same list.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, say your name and address again, please.
Okay, Sharon Cassidy.
I got the phone.
Hold on.
Maybe you gotta dial out and dial back in, or go out and come back in.
All right, let's try this again.
Are you listening to us on the computer as well, or that, they, we're getting some echo?
Yeah, I'm gonna get rid, I'm gonna shut down the computer.
That's what it is. Oh, just mute the computer for a minute.
Someone forgot about the eight-foot, Stephanie.
Yeah, she muted herself again, I guess Chairman give her another minute.
No problem.
So, uh, woman who was calling before again, star nine, I mean, star six to unmute, unmute yourself or you muted yourself again. Looks like we lost that, looks like she might be dialing back in.
Hello? Hello?
Yes?
It's Kevin Arson again, can you actually give me a reason other than your personal opinion why I can't have an eight-foot fence? Can you give me some building code or logic or topography or drainage issues? Other than you've never done one before, because they're all over town? So I'd like to know why I'm not being granted a variance. Was it you, Mr. Bell, that said no?
Yeah, yes, I did, I told you that day at the.
Well, yeah, but why? Tell me why, tell me why you're not going to grant the variance.
Because I think six, six foot is high enough in the village.
That's a personal opinion, there's eight-foot fences all over town.
Well, the, the.
That's a personal opinion.
The code specifically says eight foot is the, is the variance. You indicated you wanted to have a variance to eight foot because you wanted to provide some privacy to your property. The code is not there for you to provide that privacy to your property. If you want to attain that, you could put up some trees, some bushes, some things that will grow up high enough where you'll be completely shaded from your, your neighbor's property to get your privacy that you'd like.
It's, it's not just, it's not just shade, it's looking at the Rockledge Avenue, it's looking at another street.
Yeah, that's privacy, right? So you, if you, you could put up some plantings, that could provide you with that.
So what's the difference between a 12-foot tree or a 20-foot tree and an eight-foot fence? Can somebody tell me that? There's none at all. It's a height.
The only code limits you to a maximum six-foot fence.
Right, but I'm requesting a variance, and I'd like a logical answer why you won't grant the variance. I understand, I'm requesting a variance. And the only reason I've heard is because I was actually told by you, Mr. Bell, we've never done that before, that's not a reason. That's a personal opinion.
If, if you'd like, if you'd like to get a variance up and above what the code allows us to do as a zoning board, that would be something you would approach the village, and you would ask.
And I did, and I, and I did.
You gotta let, you gotta let. You gotta let me finish speaking, please. So you could approach the village and you could ask the village to amend the zoning code that allows the zoning board to grant eight-foot variances on fences.
Okay, can you forward me that paperwork tomorrow, please? And in an interim, I do want to make sure everybody does get a violation tomorrow that is, has broken the law.
That's really not.
And that's all your friends and neighbors, that's all your friends and neighbors.
Not up to you, Mr. Arson.
Well, I, I reported code violations to you, so it is up to you as a board member to take action. Not to go, oh, it's not my job, because then you don't need to be on the board if it's not your job.
Okay, thank you for your comments, we appreciate them.
That's it.
Okay, so we never got the woman back?
Yep, yep, uh, again, uh, we didn't get your name, again, star 6 to unmute yourself, we got you, but you have to unmute yourself, star 6. Looks like she's on now, you can speak. You're unmuted, you can speak, if you can hear me.
Do we, do we know her address?
I, I didn't get her name or address, that echo was pretty bad, unless somebody else did.
I think, Marcus, I think she said Sharon Cassidy.
That's what I heard.
Okay.
But I didn't get an address.
223 Ca- uh, 21 Catherine.
You're, you're unmuted, you should be able to speak now. I'm saying we can't hear her, I, I'm sorry, she's, is unmuted, and she should be able to speak, so I don't know what the issue is, and.
All right, I don't, I don't know what else to do with that, I mean, other than, if she, uh, calls the village hall, we certainly could take her comments, that, you know, for, now, we're probably going to close the public hearing, so I, I don't know if we could take her comments after that or not. I don't think we can.
Uh, Mike, it's Kevin Arson, who's going to be forwarding me the paperwork tomorrow?
Uh, what paperwork are you looking for?
Said you would request that the zoning be addressed, zoning be, be addressed to the board. That the code variance be addressed to the board. You said that's the way to go about this.
Yeah, Mr. Arson, it's Stephanie. That is, um, you would petition the village board by bringing a formal petition asking for a zone text amendment. You could probably ask them to come in and speak, um, regarding whether or not they'd be inclined to, to take a look at that for you. But there's no form that the village has that they can present to you.
All right, well, I do have problem cognitive problems from accidents, so I need somebody to forward me exactly what needs to be done, please.
Oh, uh, you can send me a email requesting to be, uh, with your request and to be heard by the village board, we can start that way, Mr. Arson.
Okay.
Okay, then, um, Stephanie, should we close the public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, if you're ready to vote, close the public hearing, I mean, we waited 15 minutes or more. Um, the person is unmuted, I'm not really sure what's going on, is she still on?
Yeah, she's still on, and I cannot hear her, so.
Can we reach her back in any way, this is, I don't, you know, I'm not.
Do we call that cell phone number?
Yeah, can we, can we reach out to her?
646, yeah, I can try to reach out to her, let me get her number, 646.
Now she left.
Oh, and she's gone now, I was writing the number, she's gone now.
Hang on. Before we, before we close the public hearing, is there anybody else on the board that would like to speak about this one way or the other? I know Marco did, and I, Mary said something, um, if you have a different feeling or whatever. Might as well ask it before the public hearing gets closed.
My, my only, my only comment is, if, if we have to judge based on what the zoning.
Hi, I have to go to my rental interest.
Then, you know, we have to, we have to, we have to interpretate the zone as, as the code says, and it says six foot. It's 21, or 211-21 yard screening, C1, you can look it up, so there's.
Yep.
You can't do an eight-foot fence because of that. Now, when it comes to personal opinion, uh, I don't want to look at my neighbor's yard that has a bunch of crap and junk and stuff in it. I, I understand that point of view, but does the neighbor want that fence to see an eight, nine-foot wall from their side of the yard? So, you know, you may want it on your side, but the neighbor may not want it on their side.
Well, unfortunately.
Well, I can't talk about the other eight-foot vents, fences, because I don't know anything about them, and I didn't.
No, but, but, no, I just want to say unfortunately, the other neighbor who I've written dozens of times, it's a rental property. He does not care.
He does not care. Now there's a boat there, which I gotta look at, which with a six-foot fence, I'd still see the boat. There's lawnmowers, there's constant garbage there. Constant. There's a tree that's been laying on the ground there since I moved in almost eighteen years ago. And they, I, I, I filed complaints with the building department for seventeen years now and nothing changes. Nothing.
Uh, I just want to say something. Mr. Cook is on, on the line. Mr. Cook may, has, has visited the site, I think, last week. So, Mr. Cook, you might want to say something for the record on that.
Yes, I did, uh, visit the site and I did look at the property that was on the rear side of Mr. Ashram's property. And there is a back of a garage. There is a, a boat on a trailer. And are, uh, there are some, uh, storage items there, but as far as it being a mess or full of trash, uh, the picture that I took did not depict that.
Who owns the boat?
Who owns the boat?
I, I don't know if you know that, Brian. I don't expect you to.
Uh, but there is an ordinance in the village about trailers and that would be a boat on a trailer. And, uh,
And as long as it's owned by the owner of the property or the tenant, it's allowed there. Yes.
Now, they, listen, they did clean up seventeen years later, but it's, again, it's a rental. And next year when it's a new tenant, it'll be the same thing. And I've written a homeowner, they don't even respond. They don't care. It's a cash cow for them. They don't care.
So, un- unfortunately, we can't write laws about how people keep their yards.
Well, well, when a dead tree's laying on the ground for seventeen years, we don't do anything about it?
Yeah, I can't say because I didn't see it.
I mean, it's right next to the boat. You can't miss it.
No, no, again, I-
It's about fifteen feet long.
I understand your pain from your side and, and, and from your house, it'll only look like a six-foot fence, even though it's eight foot, but from their side, it might look like a nine, ten-foot fence.
No, it won't because their property pitches back up to Rockledge as well. As I said, it's a natural valley all the way across. It, it's a hill from both sides going down to the back of that property for about ten houses. And what some people have actually done is they built a three-foot wall and put the six-foot fence on top. So now you got a nine-foot, now you got a three-foot wall with a six-foot fence, got nine feet. I mean, I'm not being unreasonable at all. Especially being three of the fences I saw on my street, I didn't even have to get in my car. You could walk by, you'd see them. So how nobody else complains or nobody else in the town cares doesn't really seem to be an issue with getting an eight-foot fence because they're putting them up. And obviously, nobody else, everybody was informed, people that can't even see my house, let alone my backyard, and nobody is objecting to this, except for a board member.
Chairman, may I speak?
Sure.
Uh, my, myself, I went up and down Catherine Cortlandt Street looking for a, there was a picture that was, uh, given to me of a fence that was supposedly eight feet tall. Uh, we looked on several properties and we did not take notice of any eight-foot fences. I saw, uh, one fence that was, uh, five feet on top of a, approximately an eighteen-inch wall, which is slightly over six feet. But, uh, I have not seen eight-foot fences as Mr. Arison has claimed. And if he knows where these happen to be, then I will be more than happy to investigate that.
All right, if, Mr. Cook, why don't you meet me eight o'clock tomorrow morning? Because one is right across the street and it's visible driving by. So how you missed it, I'm not sure. And the other one's on the house right next door to that.
Mr. Arison, you could just send an email to the building inspector, any location you have problems with, and they'll definitely investigate it.
Okay, well, there's a few dozen. There's a lot more. There's three on our street alone, but there's a few dozen.
All right.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Brian, if you'd like to meet me tomorrow morning, I'll show you the one across the street. And the one next door to me.
Uh, Mr. Cook has, has appointments already set up for other inspections. You can send him an email or send it to me and I'll make sure he investigates.
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cook. Thank you for, uh, bringing that to my attention, our attention. Uh, before we close the, uh, meeting, I did get a letter out of my-
What did you take? Wait, I'm sorry. Are you taking a vote on?
Closing the public hearing?
Yes, you gotta close the public hearing. That's what you want to do and take a vote or whatever you want to do.
Right. Um, you get a motion to close the public hearing?
Somebody just sent a chat.
Yeah, somebody just sent a chat here. Daniel Ferrero.
Mr. Chairman, do you see the chat? If you want to read it for, for the record, on the bottom of the screen, you see a chat. Just click on it and you can see what it says.
I can't, I don't get it on mine. Sorry. I'm on an iPad.
Marco, as soon as you can see, can you read it out?
Yeah, I'll, I'll read it. It's from Daniel Ferrero. It's to all the panelists. It's, uh, two-eleven dash nineteen-three. Fences and walls, unless specifically noted, provisions of this chapter should not apply to fences, terraces, or walls less than six feet in height above the average natural, natural grade or to terrace steps. Unroof porches or other similar features not over three feet above the level of the natural grade. If the property has a value like Mr. Harrison state, stated, the average natural grade might warrant reconsideration.
It is a natural effect, folks. One hundred percent.
I think, I think the measurement, sorry, Gary, if I can. I think the measurement is taken from the natural grade. So if it's lower, it's taken from that portion of it. It isn't, I don't believe the procedure is to bring the natural valley up to some other level and then measure from there. That's the grade of the property. That's what it's measured from.
Yeah.
That's just the way it is.
Well, um, I, I guess the question here is, um, do we want to close this public hearing? And, and vote on it?
You can, Chairman, you can ask for a motion if you like.
I'm going to take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Marco.
Okay.
Okay. Or, or, or do I have to say it's denied?
No, no, no. Say all in favor to close the public hearing.
Okay. All right, uh, so all in favor to close the public hearing? Aye.
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 And now you'll ask for a decision on the requests.
So basically, the decision is that, uh, we're not going to grant, uh, variance for eight-foot fence or, uh, putting a building right next to the side yard line. Am I correct?
I agree with that. It's Marco.
Mary, I agree.
So I assume your motion would be with, to deny both applica, both applications. Did I correct, Stephanie?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, so we, we need a motion now to deny it? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So a motion to deny the variances, please.
So moved.
Hey, Ed, so, Ed?
I move.
Okay, second?
I second. Mary.
Mary? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Before we, uh, before we sign off, I just want to bring to the board's attention, I got a letter late this afternoon in my box when I went down for the, uh, the forty-four pages. It's from Casabella, across the street.
Right.
Basically says, if you guys got it, I don't know.
Yes.
He sends his application for to build a garage.
Yes.
Yes.
We're all set with that. Anything else?
No.
No? Well, I want to wish all yous a happy holiday and a safe one for sure. Don't forget to wear your mask.
Yeah. Stay healthy, everybody.
Yep.
Hey, thank you.
Motion, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn. This is Marco.
So, I'll second.
Ed seconded. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody. Bye-bye.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Happy holidays. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.